To me, Jeff.
No, Dennis.
Dennis.
Dennis, can you hear me? Welcome to the regular meeting for the planning commission. We're very happy to have you here with us. We're going to start with a pledge of allegiance. And if our planning commissioners could mute themselves when they do this, Dennis, would you mind leading us in the pledge?
Oh, not at all. Love it.
Thank you.
I'm gonna stand up. Okay, put your hand over your heart, please, and repeat, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dennis.
You're welcome.
And can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Carranza.
Here.
Commissioner Hughes.
Present.
Commissioner McIntyre is an excused absence. Commissioner Schmidt.
Aki.
Vice Chairperson King.
Here.
And Chairperson Van den Eyck.
Here.
We have six present and one absent.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
One second.
Hey, Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Can I abstain since I wasn't present at the last one?
That would be for the minutes you would abstain, not for the... Yeah.
Yeah, I guess for the minutes, yeah.
Yeah, well, this is just for approval of the agenda.
Okay, agenda, yes, yes.
Okay. Vice Chairperson King.
Yes.
And Chairperson Van den Eyck.
Yes.
So motion passes six zero.
Thank you. We will now enter a comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on a matter not on this agenda or which the commission has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please state your name for the record before making your presentation. The commission may take action to direct the staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Do we have any members of the public that would like to make a public comment on something that's not on this agenda? If you too, you can raise your hand.
Not seeing any, just a reminder for those on the phone, if you'd like to raise your hand and indicate you want to speak, you'd press star nine. But I'm not seeing any.
Okay, thank you. Then we will go ahead and move to the consent calendar. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And Jason.
Okay. Vice Chairperson King.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
And Chairperson Van den Eyck.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Doesn't look like we have a committed staff report, so we'll go ahead and move directly into our public hearings. For each of the following items, a public will be given an opportunity to speak after a staff report, the chair will open the public hearing and invite the applicant or the applicants representative to make any comments. Members of the public will be invited to provide testimonies to the commission following the applicant. Speaker should state their name for the record and can I address the commission for three minutes? After all, public comments have been received, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will discuss the item and take appropriate actions. We'll go ahead and start with any disclosures of expertise on this item, Randy.
No expertise.
Tori.
No expertise.
Dennis.
No expertise.
Jason.
No expertise.
And Victoria.
None.
And there's none for me as well. So we'll go ahead and move on to the subdivision at sixty two fifty five Yano Road. And who's going to be giving us a presentation on this today?
I will be giving you the presentation. Just trying to figure out where my PowerPoint is on my screen. It doesn't want to seem to share it. Okay, let's try this.
You've started.
I did start, see. There we go, okay. So the project is a tentative parcel map located on Yano Road. It's tentative parcel map eighty twenty zero zero one nine. So this is the project location on Yano Road. It's a fairly large parcel, a little bit less than fifty acres. It's in the rural estates general plan designation and the zoning is residential suburban, which has a minimum lot size ranging from two and a half to ten acres. The minimum lot size calculation is based on things like distance from the center of the community and septic suitability. We did run the lot size for this property, however, the applicant is requesting lot sizes that are at or above the highest level of that minimum lot size. And so they do comply with our zoning requirements. So this is a four lot subdivision. There will be three parcels at ten acres and then one lot at eighteen acres. A majority of the site is heavily sloped and vegetated. But there are portions along Yano Road that are fairly flat and meet our requirements for identified building envelopes with less than twenty percent slope. So you can see here, and I do apologize in the staff report, the lots were numbered incorrectly. But each parcel has an identified building envelope along the frontage of Yano Road. That is a buildable area of the site. The conditions of approval, which we'll discuss in a minute, do have a requirement for the building envelopes to show as part of the recorded final map to ensure that future development occurs within these envelope areas. And also that an open space easement be recorded on the more sloped area of the properties behind to ensure that those areas are left fairly untouched. I did also want to point out that there are a couple drainage areas on this parcel. One of the significant ones goes through parcel number four and goes under through a culvert that goes under Yano Road at the moment. I think we've heard some neighbor testimony that some of these culverts do tend to back up. I think you've received some emails and letters and create some ponding issues on the subdivision side of the properties. And so for this particular drainage on lot four, staff has conditions that the drainage area be removed from the buildable area to ensure that there's no development that hinders that drainage in the future. And I think the applicant has some questions about how that might work. I think we've received some neighbor comments that also discuss a fairly significant drainage on parcel three as well. That following the topography would be an approximately dislocation. So we did circulate a negative declaration and initial study for the project that was released for public review. The neighborhood was notified of that document and was able to review that on the city and the county's website. And we did not find that the project would require any specific mitigation other than the rules and regulations that are already in place for building permits of the city. And so the council, the commission is being asked to certify the negative declaration as part of the project approval tonight. These are the standard findings associated with a parcel map that it's consistent with the general plan suitable for the type of development, suitable for the proposed density that will not cause substantial environmental damage, nor will it cause serious health problems and does not conflict with any access easements. So the conditions of approval, we have been in discussion with the applicant on a couple of these conditions. And I believe there was an email forged did to you with some requests for modifications. So the first request was to condition eight, which includes the building envelope for parcel four and omitting that drainage area with a thirty foot setback area to each side from the center line of the drainage, which would create a sixty foot swath through the property that could not be built on. The applicant is requesting that any limitations associated with the building be analyzed at the time of building permit and that that portion of the condition be removed. The city of Atascadero does review drainage considerations with each building permit. And our rules and regulations do state that no structures or building or grading can impact downstream properties and does have to maintain natural drainages. However, the condition was added to ensure that it was very known that this is a rather significant drainage for the area and that no building would occur in that area. And then, as I mentioned, there was a neighbor that also expressed some concern related to the drainage on parcel three. The applicant is also requesting some clarification to the no build open space easement requirement for the sloped area of the parcels, the applicants requesting that trails, animal shelters and things like viewing viewing platforms and passive recreation activities be permitted outside of the envelopes on the hill area. And so staff is recommending that we can add language to allow passive recreation activities and structures that are exempt from permit requirements. So that would be any structures that are less than a hundred and twenty square feet, which would be a small animal shelter or a viewing platform where you could go hike up a trail and sit kind of on a low deck area up on the hill if you wanted to. So the applicant's also requesting some clarification on condition number nine that currently requires undergrounding of all utilities, including utilities along the frontage. The applicant is requesting that only utilities from the poles to new development be undergrounded. This is consistent with city policy. We usually only require undergrounding along the entire frontage for commercial and larger multifamily development projects. And so we are recommending that that applicant requested clarification be made. And so in conclusion, staff is recommending that the planning commission certify the night deck and approve the proposed tentative parcel map with modifications to condition eight to allow the passive recreation activities and permit exempt structures in the open space easement and modify condition nine for the undergrounding of utilities clarification. As always, the commission has three alternatives for the project. You can approve the project with modified conditions. You can continue the hearing for more information or you can deny the project if you feel that one or more of the findings cannot be made. And with that, we conclude our presentation. We're available for any questions and I believe that the applicant's representative is also on the meeting tonight to answer any questions.
Kelly, are there any questions of staff from planning commission members? Dennis?
Yes, I don't know. Does our open space land use category have allowed uses within it? For instance, in the county, open space can have a six thousand square foot building pad or something like that. Do we have anything that says open space can be used this way? So we don't have to add additional language to the condition that has...
Oh, doesn't doesn't have standards that are that specific to what type of construction can occur in open space. We do have zoning that speaks about open space, but it doesn't get down to the level of talking about what types of structures can and cannot be built within that. And the intent here is you've got pretty steep property, you've got a lot of, you know, neighbors that are concerned about this too, and we're trying to address their concerns to make this subdivision successful while at the same time preserving that, you said, and and accommodating not only the house development, but accommodating them full use of the property without having a whole nother house up there, especially considering what's happening at the state level right now in terms of all these Senate bills that are coming down that overstep a lot of local jurisdiction.
As as far as passive uses are the things like we we have goats and we use them to graze our land to keep the brush down. Can there be animals? Within that classification as passive?
That's a perfect example is having animals like goats, animals like, you know, alpacas or what have you that could utilize this land. It's probably too steep for calibrating a heavy animal because you're going to create erosion and other issues. But yeah, when someone has a goat to take down weeds or, you know. But I will warn anyone that has goats, there's a lot of the goats that in the last few months that have gone missing in our community for some reason. Seems to be hungry lions this time.
Exactly. As far as the request by the applicant about the undergrounding of overhead utilities, so to understand clearly, I we would permit the dropping down of utilities from a pole to the property that's undergrounded there to the building site?
Yes. Yeah, so the undergrounded from the pole to the building site, but the wires along the frontage would not necessarily have to be undergrounded.
Good. There were some questions by one of the neighbors that was given. It seemed like a lot of the questions would be more for maybe the city in general, talking about the the bridge in San Luis Obispo. When it's, when is, will it be built? Valley fever, things like that. I noticed in the conditions that there are no requirements to do any road improvements to Lionel, so it's it's wide enough at this point.
Yes, it meets our the local rural road standard.
Yeah, so there was concern in the letter about traffic, heavy trucks, things like that. So really that that would be a lot of that would be eliminated except for that's what's just needed to get the utilities from the street to the property. Is that correct then?
Yeah, that's correct. And our city engineer did review that email. You know, and basically relayed that, you know, roads are built to a certain level of standard to allow for construction of single family residences. You know, on all parcels that are kind of vacant at this point. So we don't anticipate that with the eventual construction of for single family homes, that the impacts would be great enough to require any improvements to Yano.
Is Balboa Road a city maintained road?
So there's a dirt portion of Balboa Road that is mostly available for emergency access, but I believe remains open all at all times. And we have been maintaining that compacted road base as we know that it's a vital emergency access route for that neighborhood.
And lastly, I, the applicant had also noted about the numbering. And we had two number nines. Then I guess we'll repair, fix that. And then on the second page of the conditions, then we would renumber ten through fourteen to eleven through fifteen.
Yeah, we can do that with with the motion or it's, we can just fix that before we print the final resolution.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions from first half? Tori?
I just wanted to clarify the the drainage stuff. If we don't, if we do remove that from this this thing, they, when somebody comes and decides I'm going to build this house on this property, they have to go through the city for the building permit. Will that come before us if they just build a single family home there?
Yeah, building permit does not have any discretionary review, so that is just by staff. But drainage analysis is a part of staff's review of building permits.
Is there any way to see how much sixty feet is on that? Because I don't, I guess I can't really tell how how much that would really impact. Like, would there be enough room on either side of it to build a house?
I, yeah, the the applicant's engineer might be able to speak to that. I don't have the map in front of me, but I believe when I measured it to sort of the left hand side of the parcel, there would be about three quarters of an acre-ish left.
Okay.
And then maybe one acre on the other side, but I would I would have the applicant's engineer confirm that a little bit.
Okay, but there's, but it would be a big enough parcel that you could build a reasonable sized house either side of the drainage ditch where it wouldn't impact it as much.
Yeah, I think there is decent area over here and a decent area over here. Now, take, you know, take into consideration whether whether we take a portion out of the buildable area or not, there are some setbacks to leak lines from drainages and those are a hundred feet. And so sometimes the limitation on the parcel is more about field location than it is about house placement.
Just perspective, what's the width of that lot, Kelly? Would that drainage that goes through it, what's the width of the front there at the street?
I think Tim can probably best answer that. I did not bring a large version home with me.
And the question about the leach fields, I'm assuming all these parcels would be on septic?
Yes, that's correct.
So how big do leach fields have to be? How does that work?
Yeah, so and Jeff might be able to chime in a little bit, but basically an engineer comes in with an with an engineered septic design, so soils type and perk rate are kind of taken into consideration when they design that. And then there has to be a certain amount that can be perked. And so if you have poor perking soils, you might have larger leach lines. Better perking soils might have smaller leach lines. And so it really does depend on very localized characteristics of the leach field area.
And that would all be part of the building permit process?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I learn something new every time I come to one of these meetings. Now I know about septic tanks, yay.
Everything you ever wanted to know about. I had a quick question about specifically lot number four, how it's got that drainage area. If if that lot were to be subdivided into two sections, is that something that could be done future wise or is it locked into these? These are fairly large parcels. I think, what is it, two and a half acres is the minimum?
Yeah, two and a half is the minimum, although I think based on, so there's a couple factors based on the lot size calculation form. I think that the minimum lot size on these parcels ended up being about five acres. But we also want to be cognizant that layered on top of that is our requirement for all new parcels to have an area identified for building that's twenty percent or less. So given the fact that these sites are very sloped, they might not be able to subdivide farther down simply because of that requirement to identify building envelopes. We also have a minimum depth to width ratio for parcels to make sure that parcels are not super long and skinny and sort of lose, you know, their viability as parcels. And so even if you were to cut these in half so that there were additional building sites along Yano, they wouldn't meet our depth to width ratio requirement. So you know, technically based on the calculations, they might be able to be smaller. But this is really the design that satisfies all of our code requirements.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Victoria, did you have any?
Yeah, well, part of it was answered already, I think, around the whole septic suitability and just the leach field thing that the neighbor had commented about. It seems like there's going to have to be a review by a hydrologist before a single family home would be permitted anyway, correct, Kelly?
Yes.
Yeah, so that one seems like it's good. I think that my question was around the easement. And I don't really know, so I I'm curious, how does the easement get issued? Is it from the city or do you go through a partner to get that? And like, how how do we as a city work on the wording for that?
So when this this map is actually a two part process, so if the planning commission approves the tentative map tonight, the applicant has to come back to the city public works department with what's called a final map. And that final map includes the language, which includes any easements, any improvements that are to be done to satisfy the conditions. And all those things have to be done before the city will record the final map. So when we go to record the final map, those conditions have to be met, including the language for any easements and any restrictions on the map. And they get printed onto the map. And they get recorded with each parcel. The windows parcels are sold, they show up.
Right, so then who actually does the wording for them?
So we would be doing the wording with that in conjunction with the the civil engineer that actually prepares the map. He would look at the conditions and he would prepare that final map with all of those conditions written onto them and bring that to the city for review. And we would collaborate with that to ensure that it's consistent with the conditions that we approve here tonight.
Okay. Yeah, because that seemed to be, I think, the crux of the thing with the applicant, which we'll hear from, or if he has any more questions from us, but it's a, it seems as though it's an involuntary easement that we are requiring as a city or recommending in the staff report. So okay. Thank you.
When I continue on that subject about the swell crossing that lot parcel four. Is you had mentioned that there was somewhat substantial areas on either side of it. Would the easement allow for there to be some type of crossing to go from one side to the other? Some type of physical improvement, I guess, might depend on. My other question was, is there any special status to that swell as of a blue line swell or not?
In terms of the the jurisdictional status, we don't know at this time. It hasn't been analyzed by a biologist. I can say that when you, when you kind of look at it and are out there and look at older aerial photography, when maybe we had higher rain years, there is definitely sort of a defined channel area. And where it backs up from the culvert definitely stays more green, a lot of types of the year, but whether or not it would qualify as, you know, wetland or anything like that. They haven't had that reviewed yet. Crossing, it would would not have an easement over it. It just would be exempted from the building envelope. And we typically do allow some access to occur outside of our building envelope areas, whether that's driveways or whether that might need to be a connection between what they do on either side. You know, if we did do that, that would come with the requirements for an arched culvert crossing or some sort of bridge. And then we would review that at that time to make sure that there was sufficient flow for the volume of water that comes off of that hill. But it would not have like a protection easement over it. It would just be excluded from the building envelope.
Okay, would there be any issue with one parcel having two driveways? For instance, I own the lot, I want to put a home on one side and I want to have a shop on the other. So I have a driveway for my home and I have a driveway for my shop. Would that be feasible to do?
That would be feasible. We do, we do allow multiple driveways on a residential lot that has an extensive frontage, which this one would.
Okay, thank you.
It appeared to me that there was, at least from the topographic survey, that there was a structure on there. Is there a structure, any structures on this parcel right now?
I don't believe so, but we can certainly ask the engineer if there was an older, older structure. I think you're talking about in this location here.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't believe that that's there. But I could...
Any other questions for staff? Victoria?
Yeah, just one more. Was there any more communications with the applicant about, I think, the email around the thirty foot setback? Wanting to remove that?
Yeah, so our communication was mostly with the applicant's representative, who I know is the webinar with us this evening. And so he might be able to chime in on that a little bit. I think, you know, one of the concerns is just sort of limiting the building area without having any sort of drainage analysis to justify sort of what those setback areas are. From staff standpoint, the thirty feet is referred to in our lamp in terms of building setbacks from more significant swales and drainages and creeks. So that number is kind of supported by the city's lamp. However, you know, there hasn't been a drainage analysis done to see, you know, what what level of water flows through the drainage and what protections might need to be in place to maintain those flows.
Let's open the public hearing and we'll invite the applicant or the applicants represented to speak to us.
Yeah, we have Tim Roberts. If you'll just unmute yourself.
Okay. I mean, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission and staff, I'm Tim Roberts, civil engineer here to represent the applicant, Mr. Tom Berquist. Staff has done a great job in working with us here the last few days and talking about the conditions and the revised recommendation, I think, is is really good. To talk about some things that I've heard come up here is the drainage swales that come off of these hillsides. The contributing watershed area for each one of these little swales. Uh, the contributing watershed area for each one of these little swales is not great. So therefore, the, the peak flows are going to be small, uh, but they are, you know, they're steep. So the, the runoff is going to occur pretty quickly. Um, mentioning the lot number four, uh, that comes down through there. I know there's been correspondence with a neighbor that was telling you that that ponds up and stays wet for a long period of time. Uh, as Kelly's alluded to, the culverts that are currently in place are more than likely highly silted up. Um, I'm sure they're never maintained. There's really not a big reason to in this area, but, and probably also undersized. Because in the day when, uh, they were put in, uh, there was not a lot of, uh, an, analysis that went into it. So, um, what, uh, what's been talked about earlier is, is the way to really determine what's going on here is to do a hydrology analysis, come up with, uh, drainage calculations, uh, and figure out, we have a good topo map. We could figure out exactly what the, the width of the swell would be, the depth, and, uh, and the spread, uh, and, and the velocity, uh, and, and we could determine what was going on here. I can almost guarantee you, uh, is the covert is restricting the flow and therefore bonding back behind it. So that could be remedied by again, possibly even just cleaning out the existing color if it is silted up. Now, I haven't been out there specifically to look at it, but that would be my guess as to what's going on here. Because there's cer- there certainly is not adequate watershed to come, to be able to determine this is a, um, you know, high valve volume creek or even a seasonal creek. Really, it's just a drainage swell, uh, that is naturally occurring in this location. As it nears, uh, Lono Road, it's the only flat area of the property. Obviously, it flattens out. There's no defined channel and, uh, it just becomes a wet area. So one of the things that the owner was concerned about is this 60-foot, um, you know, say you're centering on the, the flow line, uh, going 30-foot either directions, that 60 feet coming out of this parcel. Um, it was mentioned earlier, is there enough room to build? And the answer would be yes. We've looked at it, even with the 60 feet, you've got about a half acre on the west and, um, a little over three quarters of an acre on the east side of that swell. Um, I felt that I even offered to do this was I could, I could run a hydrology analysis and figure it out and actually show you and model this thing as to what the extent of this whale is, uh, during a hundred-year storm event. Um, and that is something that could be done to just, uh, I do think it's a little unfair to this owner to say, we're taking 60 feet out of the center of this project. You know, it could be that 20 feet's adequate for this thing. Um, you know, or, or maybe this full 60 is warranted, but I was hoping there's some way that whoever goes forward with this, uh, parcel buys this parcel and comes to the city with a building permit application, uh, could have their engineer evaluate this and have it looked at on the, you know, on a case-by-case basis to determine, is that 60 feet really necessary? If it's, if it's excluded from the, the building, uh, envelope or the buildable area on this site, you know, that die's been cast. And so, uh, you know, it would just restrict the, the use of the parcel. I, you know, I'm not, the, the owner wants it approved tonight. And, uh, so I don't want to create anything that's going to be, uh, you know, controversy, cause this thing to be continued or anything like that. But if there was some flexibility in this easement, then a future engineer could come to the city when a, when a house is proposed for this lot and show you that 60 feet is really overkill for the, the nature of the swell. If, I, again, I don't know if there's any way to be able to word that and give that someone else the opportunity in the future to, to be able to discuss that or have that conversation, but that would be wonderful if that was possible. And, uh, I would say the same thing about, uh, any of the other minor swales on the lot, um, on the parcel. I think that's really, there is one on lot three that's, again, similar situation, uh, undefined. It widens out on the bottom, so you can't even see it if you tried to go find it. But, um, you know, when, when that parcel develops, there could be the same discussion that comes forward. And on that one, I would say, yes, uh, the engineer's got to be able to prove what's necessary. The city's got to accept that. And if there is a, at that time, if there's a, uh, any need for a biologist to be involved, then that's part of the, the precise plan application that would go forward for the, for the specific house on the lot. So that was, uh, that was the owner's, uh, desire was to say that, that seems overkill to me. Uh, and if there's any way there were to can be placed that, uh, that there is some future discretion uh, by the staff and over, uh, that would be wonderful. So it, I'm just kind of throwing that up there as a, as, as a question to, uh, to your commission and, and the staff. So I, I do have another, you know, that, I'd like to just talk about a few more items. Uh, should I just cover the whole list and then?
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll do that. Okay, uh, then moving forward, uh, we appreciate, uh, clarification of the open space. Obviously, there's a large acreage of parcels, uh, when you only have a very small building site. Uh, you, you know, you've got another nine acres of ground out there. So, um, people are pretty innovative and have different, uh, passive uses that they'd like to, to use here. And, uh, we have talked about the fact that, uh, you climb up the top of the hill with a trail. You get up there, it'd be nice to maybe have a little lean to or structure there, obviously non-permitted. Uh, and there's no, uh, you can't build an access road up there, but you know, you could trail up there. Uh, also, um, Dennis brought up, uh, the, uh, having animal keeping. And we talked about that also, you know, you could have grazing animals on this site. Um, I'm not an animal guy, so I don't know. But, uh, you know, when you have 10 acres of ground, uh, you kind of want to use it. So, uh, that's why we appreciate there being some flexibility in the passive uses of that open space. And, um, I think that's, that's pretty well covered in the condition. Um, and the very last thing, we appreciate condition number nine, obviously, under grounding of the utilities. You got to watch that condition because it says existing. And if it's left, it's a stock standard condition, uh, we realize. But in this case, these part, there's 3,000 foot of frontage across this entire project. So the, try to underground, that would be monumental and unprecedented. So we appreciate staff clarifying when it would not be required. Uh, so that is really it. Um, again, the, the applicant appreciates the staff recommendation and, uh, and certainly wants to move forward for, uh, to get a vote tonight on the project. Um, that's really the end of what I have. Um, probably want to elaborate on a few of those, but I'll open it back up to your commissioner staff for any questions.
Um, commissioners, anybody have any questions of Mr. Roberts?
I do. Um, so are there any current utilities ran to any of these lots?
Uh, no, there are not. Uh, oh, and by the way, there's no structure on, uh, lot one that was brought up too. So no onsite utilities. You, we do have, uh, water in, uh, out in Lono Road and also, uh, PG&E running down the right of way.
Okay, reasons I'm asking is because if there's nothing and you're able to get a walk-in trencher, that's awesome. But if there's already stuff, I totally see where your complications can come from. So water is already there?
Yes, it, it's in Lono Road, right? It would have, water services would have to be constructed. And as Dennis also mentioned here, there, uh, you know, there would, uh, from the existing overhead power, there would have to be transformer set and drop from those poles down to, uh, then undergrounding on the subject property. So everything on the subject property, the parcels would be underground.
Okay, all right, thank you for clarifying. It's all welcome.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, um, we received some letters, so, and that, do we want to read those into the record?
Yes, I do need to read those into the record, so. Here we go.
Why don't we do that now?
Okay, uh, the first one is from Tim Roberts and it says, we have reviewed the staff report and conditions of approval and have no issues to raise. We hope the planning commission will approve this application. Please let me know if you have any questions for us. Hi Kelly, um, I just hung up with, this, this is from Tim. I just hung up with Mr. Berquist, just a few questions and proposed minor edits to the staff report represented below for your consideration. Number one, the building site exhibit on page three has the parcels numbered incorrectly. Number two, condition number eight, Mr. Berquist has decided not to protest condition eight, but to simply request that permitted uses with the open space easement be noted. For example, it is possible to create a walking path to a site where a view platform could be placed, assuming no building permit is required, question mark. Also, since these are large acreage rural parcels, future owners may desire to construct animal keeping support facilities such as shelters, fencing, enclosures, water and feeding facilities, et cetera. There could be other agricultural uses which cannot be anticipated. Is it possible for more specific language to be added to the condition, question mark? In addition, the 30-foot swell setback on parcel four is most likely much wider than warranted by the minor flows associated with the seasonal or with the season swell. We anticipate the existing culvert under Yano is most likely semi-silted up and/or undersized. Either condition can result in storm runoff backing up onto the subject parcel. It seems reasonable that a future buyer should be provided with the opportunity to have his design professional team evaluate the specific hydrology of the contributing watershed, determine the actual peak runoff from a 100-year storm event and calculate the actual width, depth of flow and velocity, velocity. At that point, you, your staff will have the data necessary to properly evaluate and recommend the appropriate setback requirement. Is there a way the condition can be worded to allow this process to occur? Lastly, there are two condition number nines. The first one involves utilities. We would suggest a clarification stating undergrounding of the existing overhead utility lines within Yano right of way is not required. Please let me know if you have any questions or would like to discuss our suggested amendments. Uh, we have a letter, we have from Marcia Torgerson, and it says, I live across the street from this project and I support it. I have one concern. During the rainy season, a large amount of water washes down the hills and continues through a culvert under the road to the blue line creek that runs through all of our properties across the street from this project. The water actually ponds on the project's side of the street until enough water has collected to go through the culvert. The building envelopes that staff has drawn on parcels number three and four are both impacted by the pounding. I noticed that your staff report mentions the drainage swell that flows through parcel four, but I believe parcel three is impacted too. I know there are requirements when building a home about managing drainage to neighboring properties. My main concern is leach fields. Your staff report mentions a condition that requires a 30-foot setback from the swell, and I am not sure if that includes leach fields. Does a leach field have to stay within a building envelope? I just want to make sure that future owner builder of these properties will not be allowed to place leach fields adjacent to any drainage swales so that I don't have sewage running through my property to the creek. I am glad to see Mr. Berquist moving ahead with this project. Sincerely, Marcia Torgerson. And the last letter is from Karen Robles. Our email is meant to address the, the proposed project at 6255 Yano Road. Our concerns are as follows. Lack of current safe ingress and egress for Yano Road. Is Balboa Road a paved road? Is this road a safe road in the event of evacuations during a fire? Lack of current bridge on Santa Lucia and Yano Road that is safe and passable by two vehicles. Is this bridge safe in the event of evacuations during a fire or other natural disaster? Wasn't this bridge scheduled to be repaired quite some time ago? What happened to that project? This bridge is, in its current condition, is an obvious safety hazard only to be made worse by heavily loaded construction vehicles. We are not against the project going forward, however, is the current infrastructure able to support this project safely? Possible future litigation should be a concern to the city of Atascadero if the bridge and road and ingress and egress issues are not resolved prior to this project moving forward. Uh, future water restrictions posed by climate changes, concerns over valley fever as earth is graded and coochie spores are released, length of project trucks, dust, noise and increased damage to Santa Lucia and Yano Road as well as the bridge. Santa Lucia Road damage is already very bad with ever increasing and deepening potholes. Will this road ever be repaired properly, considering the increase in heavy construction vehicles this will create? We would appreciate our concerns being addressed in writing by the proper authority in this matter. Thank you very much for your time. Sincerely, Karen and Art Robles and Norma Holzer, Yano Road Residence. And that's all we have. Jeff, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. Um, if there's anybody that is online right now that would like to, um, participate in this discussion, if you please raise your hand, uh, we will take public comment right now on this project.
And yeah, just another reminder, if you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand function. And if you're on the phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. And I'm not seeing any raised hands here.
Okay, then we will, um, close the public comment portion. And, um, maybe have a little discussion among us. Kelly, question for you, is the, um, is the drainage swell, is there a defined drainage pattern on lot four?
There does appear to be a defined, uh, drainage pattern. Um, I can probably pull that up on G I S if you guys want to see kind of what the area looks like. I think you can kind of see the depression from there, if that would be helpful. I think I have to stop sharing the screen though.
How will, how would that be defined? Um, if that, if that, um, drainage easement were to be put on this project, how would that actually be defined?
So, um, again, I don't think it would be a formal easement. It would just be left out of the building envelope area. So it would be an area outside of the building envelope. Um, so you could still take access over there and bridge that swell, um, in one of multiple ways depending on, um, hydrology analysis. Um, but it wouldn't be a buildable area for structures.
Okay, but if we, how is the building area defined? Is it on the map? Does it have coordinates? Is it, or is it just?
Yeah, so we, uh, we require that the building envelopes be recorded, uh, as a separate map sheet, an informational map sheet as part of the map. So, um, it would be recorded, um, on the property and come up in any title search that way.
So that's why I was asking about defining the swell, because if it's, if there's not a defined drainage area, how would we know the exact location of this whale so we can tell exactly 30-foot offsets on it?
Yeah, good question. And our, our, uh, engineer, I think, who's, who's on, might be able to hop on. Um, it's fairly defined just based on topography in this area here. Um, I believe there are some unique patterns here, although you can see a clearly defined ch- channel um, on some of the, uh, aerial photography that's been done.
Do you want me to, uh, elaborate, Kelly?
That'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that, that is a low area. And I think, um, Marcia Torgerson's comment about, on, on parcel three, you can see that kind of going right up parcel three, but maybe more on the back. What would that be? The north corner of that lot? It's more defined, but then it kind of spreads out. So that could be addressing her issue with that. But as far as like dealing with that, they might have to reroute it. You know, if need be, I'm not sure if that's, Kelly, was that a, a natural channel or is, what is, if they can reroute that or not?
Yeah, and again, I guess we don't know, um, we don't know without, you know, some sort of more formal analysis. Um, and it is true that if we leave something out of the building envelope area or have something in, and the channel moves over time or, um, or, you know, a, a new channel is further defined when we get a heavier rain year. Um, we would be able to accommodate that through a building permit, but then there would be a portion of the site that maybe shouldn't have that restriction on it, um, that occurs in the future. So you are correct that, that not having, um, the channel perfectly plotted um, at this time does make it a little bit difficult to, uh, figure out where that, that 60-foot swath might be. Um, but that can be done. Uh, if you, if the commission decides to leave that condition, that can be done as part of the final map process.
This is, this is just my, my take on this. I, I think we'd be better suited to go, because, because it's covered in the lamp and it's requirement of our building codes that, that be left off of this. And then it'd be addressed at the time of building, just because I don't want them to have to go through tremendous analysis prior to, you know, recording this map. That's just, that's just my take on it. Um, any other comments, Dennis?
Yeah, um. As far as the building envelopes, again, you're conditioning that a second map sheet or a separate map sheet be uh recorded along with the ten of the ma- with the final map. Uh, it seems to me that within that second sheet, you also could include language about um that when the property develops um that this hy- hydrology study needs to be done and that the hydrology study will define what the the channel will be and that the uh developer, the applicant for that building permit then would record uh some type of easement, I mean, actually making easement versus an exclusion is being talked, talked about. Um, you had mentioned about the lamp before and so our lamp says there's a uh, a thirty foot offset from what?
Nick, do you want to chime in? I believe it's.
Yeah, I I'm looking at that right now. I don't see a thirty foot offset from anything.
There, there is a hundred foot offset for septic, right?
Right, so there's, there's different things. If it's a septic tank, if it's a disposal field like a leach field or if it's a seepage pit. You know, some of those setbacks are the same for one or two or three of those. Others are different for all three. So if we're talking about um you know, like a stream spring or river, it's a hundred feet for septic tanks and disposal fields, but seepage pitch pits are a hundred and fifty feet. Um, I'm looking here for ditches. And I don't think we really have one for a ditch, so you know, it would basically be just setting it back far enough so it doesn't daylight out, so the leach field is, you know, set back far enough and um that's something that, you know, the design engineer for that seepage system would would need to identify.
I think what this comes down to is it's it's a discretionary action and if we called this out in the um the secret document, Kelly, or just called out as a condition approval, or is it both?
It's just called out as a complaint approval.
Okay, so whether or not it's specific in the lamp, there is obvious issues here with a drainage way. We've had comments from a neighbor on that issue. We obviously don't want a leach field within close proximity to any drainage, whether it's a drainage dish or a creek. And um I think that um it is challenging to get very specific on this map, but if we don't have a predetermined conclusion, then we're going to put out potentially misleading statements when someone purchases this property. I don't want to kick the can down the road to have them do additional analysis when they're trying to design a house and or if they purchased the property already with their dream home already envisioned on it. There needs to be something here that really outlines the responsibility of where that house and where it's septic tank and leach field can safely go. And I think we have some information that tells us that that drainage can get pretty intense in a big storm and um there's probably some common sense to that and thirty foot's a pretty small measurement. But maybe there's some flexibility in that, but there at least should be some setback from that drainage for any um grading, any structures and any underground septic wastewater facilities.
So this is a question for you then, is um if this is not considered a blue line string and it's not a super well-defined thing, can it be rerouted on the property?
You could, you possibly could do that, but then, you know, nature's going to reroute itself. If you look at the drainage starts on the adjacent property outside of this map and comes into this property and it's a pretty wide area, you could probably reroute it, but
If it's determined not to be jurisdictional, um, you know, it it could be rerouted, especially as you get towards the bottom where it kind of flattened out. Um, that would just take our hydrology analysis. Um, whether or not it's listed on the blue line maps, um, those were just plotted in the sixties and they don't necessarily carry forward all the way, although they provide some background information, so um even if it's not listed as a blue line creek, it might be jurisdictional um after that's reviewed by a biologist.
Is there any way that we could put a contingency in place where um this can be brought up later contingent on whether the culverts, uh whether the drainage is actually restricted, how they're stating it possibly could? Because if the current infrastructure is correct and it's just block, what uh backing up because it hasn't been maintained, that's one thing. But right now, I mean, we don't have anything salt, a solid definition, so if we get hit with three years of hard storms and mother nature plots way over on the other side of the property where the water's going to go, I would hate for us to say this section's not being used and now all of a sudden this section is actually the problem.
Is it possible to do as Dennis suggested and instead of defining the um that little ditch area to actually, you know, put a note on there that it on the the additional sheet on the map that's would say that they that the builder would be required to go through whatever steps it's necessary to hydrology analysis or whatever, instead of actually defining it with with actual building envelopes.
Yeah, I think um and I'll maybe let uh Nick weigh in a little bit on whether or not those kind of conditions and requirements are appropriate for the informational map sheet.
And maybe it's also possible too, but conditions designed that that allows options to did in this case that you know, the setback is thirty feet from the drainage unless a hydrology analysis demonstrates that you know, additional measures can be met, yada, yada, yada. There could be an optional sort of punch list there that allows options should that drainage change or should they change to during drainage analysis to nail it down so that we have some flexibility, but we understand that wherever that drainage is, wherever they decide to move it to, however they decide to locate it, that we don't want the improvements to exist within it.
And we do have, you know, a standard condition about making minor adjustments to things by staff as we go through. Um, uh, just for me to be clear on this, I've heard two things, thirty feet and sixty feet, so I I'm imagining sixty feet would be thirty feet on each side of the defined line, whatever it is, or is it thirty feet centered on the defined line?
Thirty feet from the edge of each side of this boundary is the way I understand it.
Okay.
The sixty feet total.
Yeah, and actually, there's, there's a floodplain ordinance that we will be bringing forth in the near future at some point that we have a thirty foot setback from a creek or drainage ways. It's not, it doesn't really identify where you measure that from. So we need to make that identification and it's going to be, I think, last time around when the city did this, like, I don't know, eight or ten years ago. Um, I think people came out with pitchforks and torches. I'm I'm guessing it's going to be the same way, but um you know, I think what we would do is probably have it from the ordinary high watermark is where we would try to measure it from or top of bank or something that's real that you're not guessing at, you know what I mean?
Yeah, top of banks are confusing too. I mean, I fisher wildlife defends sometimes uh top of bank as, you know, where the uh where riparian trees are. And so where you might say, here's a defined line, they'll say, well, here's a tree that's out there and that's a riparian tree. Uh, so it's kind of a, uh, sometimes an awkward thing. Could we define a, uh, on the additional map sheet uh, define, uh, let's say, uh, a minimum of uh, thirty, thirty feet centered on the creek up to up to thirty feet away from the the liner, try to provide some type of language as the director was saying in there that would be be definitive that this has to be done or it is being done. But the width can vary from from here to there. And uh again, include that on the additional map sheet. So when things are on the additional map sheet, uh, they are disclosed in the title work uh that there is the additional map sheet that this information is there. So I believe that the, the buyer, if they're doing their due diligence would understand that there's going to be something there that needs to be addressed and they uh in ignoring it, I would say that they're not doing their, their job of being aware.
So I did just pull this up just for you for information, so you can see sort of this is the the channel here. Um, and then it comes under here and kind of backs up in this location and then you can see it goes, it's a tributary into this blue line creek that has this large pond area uh behind the houses on the other side of the street.
Yeah, to me, to me, that looks like more of a draw of some sort, you know what I mean? Just a low area in there. I'm not sure. I'm sure it could be a seasonal, you know, drainage way where.
I mean, just a little bit on that.
Of which part?
Just like the drainage area on that vacant parcel.
On the subdivision.
There we go, yeah, right there on this. Um. Wow, it's a big open area. Yeah, it kind of crosses the the whole area in an inopportune way. Makes it challenging, doesn't it?
Now, it it seems to me that if we can condit- on the additional map sheet, if we can put some language in there that allows some flexibility instead of actually defining it right now. I mean, we want it to be the thirty feet on either side of it, but unless we have the map it right now, we won't, we don't know, right?
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Can it be that the language is somehow like a maximum, like up to, so it's not over that, but it's not saying that it is going to be that, but that's like the maximum to ease the person who wants this approved tonight, but at least we have something in writing as Phil was saying.
Would, would there be comfortability with perhaps having a condition that they just record a deed notification against, uh, you know, parcel three and four, that there are existing drainages on site and that um, any future development, you know, will require hydrology analysis and potential setbacks from the, the existing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's what they proposed, I think.
Yeah, I think, I think having that as a separate document allows it not.
Just for three and four.
Mm-hmm.
Not good law.
Yeah. Um, I was also wondering too, um, this sounds like a uh from reading a little bit of the general plan on the land use part um and open space around um having people submit percolation tests. Is that something? Because I know that the wastewater was brought up a few times by a couple of different emails. Uh, how does that work as far as submitting percolation tests for water quality?
Next, still on.
Yeah, so um a lot of times what, I think there's been one more recently, maybe uh the San Rafael development last year that it was more steep and it looked like there was, you know, maybe some areas that wouldn't be conducive to build an onsite wastewater treatment system or septic system. But um this one, it seems like there'd be enough and they would have to do those perk tests at the time of building permit to be able to, you know, show where those areas are. And not only the leach field areas or if they could do a septic um pit or whatever, they also need that hundred percent expansion area, so they need to identify, you know, in fifty years when that leach field fails, where they're gonna put the next one, so.
So that all has to be done, Nick, before they could actually get the approval for the homes?
Yes, yeah, so that usually is submitted at the time when they put, uh, submit their billing plans.
And they don't have to do any perk tests after the fact?
No, just before, just to base, you know, the sizing of the system.
Yes.
Um, I, the discussion about uh a deed restriction on three and four uh doesn't necessarily bo- bother me, but I'm wondering if we could open up the uh public comment to hear what the applicant engineer has to say, if anything, about the potential of a deed restriction.
I don't think we're looking at deed restriction, but more just of a notification.
Uh, and to me, I I kind of looked at it as um it might make the lot less desirable to have something like that on top of it. But then there's a purpose for it, which is the notification.
But it's either going to be on the map or it's going to be on the, the deed one way or the other, so.
It, if I can chime in here, if you had a deed um notification of some sort, that provides the most flexibility because that's going to be site-specific then. And that, you know, once that site grading and everything else is figured out, they, they have the most flexibility. If you include it on the map as uh like a sixty foot easement, you know, drainage easement or whatever, um, then it's, then it's going to be sec.
That's a good point. Well, um, I think that as in, at least I, I think um providing as much flexibility in future for the future buyer to deal with the situation, which could arrange the gamut. I mean, I seen this well, it's a little bit different than what I pictured it in my mind, but I mean, the idea of even, you know, ponding it above and and metering it out from, from a ponded location. Uh, if they could do that, I don't know. But uh I would like to uh provide as much flex flexibility and I agree with what Nick just said about recording the notification. It's much, much easier to deal with versus putting it on the map, whereas if you put it on the map, then you might have to go back in and change the map. Uh, if you want to make, make some changes, which is sometimes difficult.
Was anybody up to giving us a, make a when I say uh
I'm just confused about the, the open space um easement and if someone makes a motion, how does that get whirled into that uh messaging?
So I think we have under on the slide that hopefully you can see um number one is to modify condition eight to uh clarify that we're allowing passive recreation and permit exempt structures in the open space easement. Um, we can certainly clarify that that would include, um, you know, honorips of ant grazing.
Motion maker can modify any conditions you see fit. Uh, you don't have to go with the staff recommendation, so these are recommendations. So as motion maker, motion maker can, can change any of these items for actively as you see fit. Um, and then it's up to the rest of the commission as to whether they want to agree with that motion.
Okay.
In a gentle nature.
Yeah, I mean, it sounded like we talked about this and I know Phil just had mentioned earlier certain animals he wouldn't have recommended, but other animals, yes, and I mean, that seems a little bit too detailed in my mind, but the whole idea of permit exempt structures, that's very generic. Um, the only other thing is, do we have to potentially get a little bit more detailed with trail easements? And versus a road, because, because that, that was talked about by Tim. And then the other thing is just upholding the native tree ordinance, but I don't know if that's just a part of already the open space easement on the general plan, so we don't have to like detail all of this.
Yeah, that, that's there either way. I think the most important thing is we did not want to have activities occurring up there that trigger construction permits. And so I think that's the the broadest blanket of all, is that when you're grading more than fifty cubic yards, that triggers a construction. If you're going to put a road up that hill, it's going to trigger a construction permit because you have to do more than fifty cubic yards of grading. But at the same note, if you built a trail with shovels and a pick, that's not going to constitute fifty cubic yards, not going to trigger a grading permit or a construction permit. So that grading permit or construction permit threshold is the key thing probably to hang on to there. If somebody wants to, you know, build, hand build a small deck, viewing platform, gazebo, small animal enclosure, all small animal enclosure, all these things that may or may not, or I think that don't figure construction permits. That's the idea. Use it as your yard, use it as a place for your animals. Use it as what we intend our task at our properties to be used for, which is you know, all of those kinds of activities. So we're not, we're not trying to say that. We're trying to say that let's not build a second unit up there, an accessory dwelling unit up there, greater road up there or do more substantial construction.
How do you envision? I want to build a platform up there. I need material to get up there. I can carry that material. I, I could use an ATC ninety or whatever to get it up there. How, how do we envision with things like that occur?
How do you get up to the back of your property, Nick? Are you still on, Nick? What's the name of that?
I have, I have a Polaris Ranger. It's a four by four Polaris Ranger that
That's what I would recommend if you're going to build a structure, get a Polaris Ranger four by four. And it can probably go up, what, thirty percent flow?
Oh, more than that. I've taken it up one to one. I wouldn't recommend it. And then I had to back down because I ran it to rock out crop, so.
So that would be considered passive.
Yeah.
But having a ongoing road or track up there wouldn't be passive.
Well, like I said,
I like racing my son on our dual Polaris machines and we can just drive where we want.
Well, you know, there becomes a limit where your neighbors are going to be pretty unhappy about dust and, and noise and, and other issues. That's a whole nother ballgame. We would hope that does not occur because those things conflict with our municipal code as well. And so respect thy neighbor, respect thy, thy area is really the rule there. Now, if the, if the commission wants, you can put conditions on there about how that back property gets treated, but I caution you, it can kind of become unwieldy, the amount of detail you can get into.
Yeah.
I see Randy. Is, would you like to make a motion, Randy?
Yes, but first I want to make a question just for staff. Just so I understand correctly, if we were to do the deed restriction as mentioned, it would essentially be tying each deed. So each one of those properties, the person buying it would already be getting a note saying, hey, you will have to deal with this water issue. I mean, we're not putting a direct line there, but we're pretty much directly notifying them like, hey, you have to deal with your water issue. And that would probably trigger them doing a hydrology report, I'm assuming, correct?
Yeah, what it does is it notifies them upon sale. And so sometimes people will buy a property, hire engineers, have a vision, have it all drawn and then come into the city. And then we're like, oh, there's a significant drainage we have to deal with. So this will just give them notification upfront on purchase of the property that they need to take that into consideration before they design something.
Okay, then, that being said, I would like the motion that we pass this with the modification to section eight, that we allow the passive recreation and we exempt the structures, kind of leave it to the common sense. And then the modification on the section nine, it seems reasonable if we're allowing all the other neighborhoods to have that, that we do allow the above ground to the point where on their property, they are going underground. And that we put the deed restrictions in that will allow each individual to deal with it as they buy the property where it's something that we're not necessarily kicking the can down the road, but they're at least getting notified right away.
Good. You add the renumbering of conditions on there's two nines, so renumbering from ten to fifteen, I think right now we're at ten to fourteen.
Just want to make sure I don't, I don't fully grasp what you are recommending there, so.
On the conditions of approval, there's a numbering issue.
Oh, gotcha.
Say correct numbering issue.
Oh, yeah, and motion that we correct the numbering issue.
I'll second the motion.
Let, can I get a roll call on this, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson King?
Yes.
Chairperson Vanda Nykoff?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Okay. We have any commissioner reports? Or comments?
Oh, I just wanted to tell Annette that if she can put abstain for the consent calendar for me instead of yes, I was waiting to hear the minutes, but I only heard consent calendar, so.
Yes, for the minutes, I will. So you want to abstain from voting on the minutes from the last meeting, but
Yeah.
Yes, guys, I will, I will take care of that.
Yeah, and then on the agenda, we're already, I think we all approved without speaking to it, but just the numbering on the summary for the agenda item number two tonight. Just correcting the numbering.
Yeah, we, we put that in there.
In the agenda, yeah. Okay, cool. Thank you.
All right, well, let's go to our director's report.
Good to see you commissioners. It's been a little while. We, we skipped one or two. But there's a lot of work to come. I mean, it's going to be the year of the general plan. A city is not an accident, but the result of coherent visions and aims. So twenty twenty two is the year of the general plan for a task at arrow. That's a big task. Are you guys up for that?
Yes.
This is state of the union right now.
So yeah, it's a big thing. It's a big, a lot of policymaking coming up. We're hoping that perhaps, it hasn't happened yet, but perhaps the development intensity will slow down. Been really busy in community developments. A lot of stuff hasn't come to the commission because it's been a lot of construction permits and a lot of projects we've already approved that we're still working with. But more to come your way. We're still working on the Big Barrel Creek project. It will come your way soon. A lot of policy things are happening. We have to deal with Senate Bill nine. We have to deal with accessory dwelling units. We're likely going to be taking an urgency ordinance through to accommodate Senate Bill nine put in place certain health and safety standards for our community so we can respond to that before it takes effect January one. If you haven't heard of Senate Bill nine, look it up. It's called urban law split. It allows certain properties to be eligible to be split in half. It also allows for two units to be developed on each of the sites. It kind of accompanies the accessory dwelling bill, but it's different and it's another bill aimed at really producing housing, streamlined housing. So all that coming up before our general plan, but what I want to get out there is a date of November sixteenth, which is a regular planning commission hearing day. So I'm hoping you're available that day. We're going to see if we can get the city council to join up with this meeting so that we can jointly meet and have our first big discussion about the general plan update. We hope to have a consultant on by that time, so that date could be an introduction to the consultant and a broad discussion about scoping out the big project of the general plan. So we're targeting that date. What do you guys think about that?
Sounds perfect.
Good.
Sounds like a party.
It's going to be a party. It's going to be fun. It's going to be a lot of us. It's going to be a consultant. And it's going to be a kickoff to a year or two of a general plan update where you will play a part in the next twenty years of a task at arrow. How we grow, how we get designed, how we can handle our infrastructure and everything else, economic development, the whole bit. So how many, do you know how many elements are required in the general plan in the state of California? You got it. He's the winner.
I was waiting for that meeting for that to be my thing I learned that day. I already learned my thing today, Phil. Stop spilling my brain.
Are we still doing the Zoom only? Are we returning or doing hybrid? How is that looking?
So we're following what the city council is still doing, which is all virtual right now. Until the county health department lets us do something different and we no longer have to be masked indoors. We hope that day approaches sometime soon, but for now we're virtual. We tried one or two hybrid meetings with the council. It kind of worked out, but then suddenly we were back into indoor masking regulations again with the the Delta variant. Now that's waning again. I hope it continues to wane. I hope it continues to go. Just like Commissioner Anderson's shirt, I'm right there with you.
I hear you. I just, I would be very, very happy to continue with a hybrid while on demand breastfeeding.
Yes, I see that. There's a lot of others that are right there with you that it kind of works. It's actually broadened our public participation quite a bit. So even when we're back, we're going to have a hybridized model that's going to allow for people
I'm happy to hear that, yes. For civic engagement, for sure.
Yeah, yeah. So there we go. There's my, my big director's report, but happy to answer your questions. If you've got questions about specific things that are happening.
I have a question of Victoria. What is the baby's name?
My commissioner partner name is Rosalyn Ray.
Cool.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Victoria. That's fantastic.
Well, thank you, everybody. We'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting until we meet next time. Is it, do we have something scheduled for the nineteenth?
Oh, I forgot to get to that. Shoot, I'm looking at my calendar right now.
We don't have anything scheduled for that date right now, so we will likely cancel it.
Okay.
Okay, well, we look forward to our next, next meeting, whenever it, whatever it is.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you all.
God bless.